Good evening. I'll call the regular meeting of the Daily City Library Board of Trustees to order, Tuesday, June nineteenth, twenty eighteen. Would everyone please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Trustee LaGerta?
Present.
Trustee Devera?
Present.
And trustee Louis and Vice President Chubunka are not here, but President Lex?
Present. Thank you.
Have a call.
I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Angela? Approved? Approved.
Well, yeah, see, I moved that we approved the agenda.
Oh.
So who's doing it? I'm not doing it. Who's making the motion?
Approved. I'm sorry. Moved to motion.
Okay, and I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And is there a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting, May fifteenth?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. We are here for the Director's Report.
Sure.
Starting with the city budget.
Right, and as you recall, our last meeting, there was a request not only to understand what has been allocated for the library budget over the next two fiscal years, but to get a sense of what the general budget is for the city. So we've invited the Finance Department to help us out, and tonight, I present to you Mr. Jason Poon, representing Finance Director Lawrence Chu. Take it away, Jason.
Thanks. Hi, Jason.
Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees. I'm going to present to you a brief overview of the biennial budget for the fiscal years twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. This was approved by the City Council last month. So what we're going to look at is first the summary of the citywide expenditures, then we'll take a look at the just the general fund revenue and expenditures, and we'll look, the third one, we'll look at the reasons why, you know, why we have a structural budget gap, and finally, we'll look at the general fund summary overall. So the budget summary. For fiscal year twenty nineteen, library and recreation comprises of about ten point two million of the general fund's eighty five point seven million dollar expenditure. Libraries portion is about thirty seven percent, or about three point seven million dollars. You can see citywide is going to be one hundred and eighty seven point one million dollars for fiscal year nineteen.
Okay.
For twenty twenty, library and recreation will spend about ten point six million dollars of ninety point two million dollars general fund money. Again, libraries about thirty seven percent too, with about three point nine million of that ten point six. And then the citywide will be one hundred and ninety one point seven million dollars. Now we'll look at the general fund revenues and expenditures, but first we'll look at the revenues, the general fund revenues by category. There are three major categories that make up approximately sixty four percent of the general fund revenue, and those are property tax, forty one and a half percent, sales tax at about fifteen percent, and UUT, or utility users tax, at seven percent. The city relies heavily on these three categories. For the general fund expenditures, there are three major categories that account for seventy six percent of all expenditures. Most of them are salaries at forty six point four percent. Benefits make up twelve percent, and retirement makes up seventeen percent. So total, three quarters of that, you know, our expenditures are salary benefits and retirement. So it's kind of a lot. Now we'll look at general fund expenditures by the department. We could see that police and fire account for sixty four percent of the total general fund budget. And then we see a portion of library and rec with a little under twelve percent. So see the difference in sizes between the departments. Now we're going to look at the structure budget, structural budget gap. So this first slide, we'll look at the expenditures. One key driver is workforce cost. The City Council approved raises across the board, so we'll see ranges from three to six percent. And then also, and pers is increasing consistently at eighteen percent annually from fiscal year twenty eighteen to twenty twenty. Another factor is pension obligation bonds. Those debt payment increase four percent annually all the way up until twenty twenty four. And finally, the other post-employment benefits, employment benefits at OPEB, those are projected to increase five percent annually until the end of twenty twenty six.
Just one point of clarification. You mentioned that City Council approved raises across the board. Most of the employees in the library are AFSMI. They have not reached an agreement yet, so we're hoping they reach an agreement, but just a point of clarification, they are without a contract as of today.
Is it under negotiation?
It has been for quite a while. I think the contract ended last September.
Oh, okay.
It's been a very protracted, I think there's thirteen bargaining groups
Yes.
in the city. Every other one came to
Has approved, yeah.
an agreement, so AFSMI is the last.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
So now on the other side, on the other side of the equation is the revenues. Daily City does not have a diversified revenue base. We rely too much on our three major revenue categories, the property tax, sales tax, and UUT. So therefore, our revenue growth can't keep up with our expenditure increases, which is why we have this budget gap. Now we'll look at just the general fund summary overall. So in fiscal year twenty nineteen, there will be a deficit of about four point seven million dollars, and that deficit increases in twenty twenty to about six million dollars. And we intend to use the general fund reserve to cover these shortfalls. So for the two years, it's about ten point seven million dollars of general fund reserve that we'll be using. Any questions?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the
The last part.
I didn't retain
Sorry.
the amount of budget allocated to the library in twenty nineteen, and how does that compare to twenty twenty?
In twenty nineteen, the library has a budget of three point seven million dollars.
Okay.
And then in twenty twenty, they have three point nine million.
All right. And is that just through the
It's pretty much standard, yeah.
personnel costs and
Yes.
Thank you. Other questions?
Nope. I don't have any questions.
Angela?
I just got to figure out how to get more money for the library.
Well, or keep tightening the belt, you know.
The eye-popping numbers are the last two that appear on the slide.
I mean, at some point
Exactly.
you know, there won't be a reserve to fund a deficit, so.
Right.
Mr. Poon, thank you very much. May I have a copy of your presentation?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Do you have one for each of us?
Yes, just my team.
What a man. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out tonight. Next item, auto renewal. Item auto renewal. Chaela?
I'll just give a quick introduction now. There are two major trends happening in libraries, both in the Bay Area, across the state, and throughout our country. The first is the elimination of fines. That is really picking up momentum. The City of Berkeley is out on front of that. They've eliminated all fines, not just for youth and teens, but across the board. And there are lots of libraries who are applauding them for that move, and the logic being that, you know, they're trying to remove any barriers that might prevent people from using the public library, in my opinion. It's a little bit extreme because, you know, we do like to teach responsibility when checking out library materials, but we seem to be in the minority in that opinion. It seems like the sea change in library is getting rid of fines. The other interesting development that seems to have cropped up within the last year or so is the concept of auto renewal. Right now, you check out materials at our library, you can renew them from home.
Like online, yeah.
Which is popular, easy way to do it. If you're not quite through with that book, you need an extension. And I'm going to let Chaela take it from here about the auto renewal process. That is the new trend.
Thank you.
So as Joseph said, you can currently renew your items manually. You can go onto the website. You can actually use SMS to do that. You can call us and talk to a person during open hours. You can come in. We do send an automated reminder notice just a couple of days before your items are due, which hopefully is received by most people.
It is, and it's very helpful.
Yes.
Yes.
So the county library has taken the initiative to pilot something new, and that is the auto renewal. They actually just went live with it May twenty-third, so they don't have a lot of feedback yet. It was interesting, the one thing that I heard from the deputy director was that people complained because we were renewing the day before things are due, so that in the event that there's something blocking the renewal, people have time to return the item. But it means that it renews for three weeks or one week, depending on the item, from that day. So if your library day, you always go to the library on Wednesdays, your item is going to be due on a Tuesday after that, so they're looking to address that. It's a small thing, but it actually really throws people off if they have a routine for the library, and we want to be responsive to those kinds of things. They are going to run this pilot probably through the next meeting of the Peninsula Library System Administrative Council, which is going to be in early August. And at that point, it's likely that all of the libraries in the system are going to take a look at it, weigh the pros and cons, and consider moving forward together. There's a huge value in doing things the same, a huge value when we do have differences. It's a negative experience for the patrons, it's difficult for the staff to explain things, it's confusing. So assuming that this is something that the group is interested in doing, I think we would recommend certainly going along with that group and putting this into effect. Now, auto renewal will renew up to the maximum number of times, which for us is currently five times. It will renew the normal length of checkout, which for us, for all items except for magazines for adults, is three weeks. It will not renew if there's a block on your record, which can be because you have something lost. It can also be just because your record has expired, which it does regularly every three years. It can be because there's somebody waiting for the item. So what will happen is, in addition to getting that courtesy notice, they'll get a notice that the items have been renewed, and if any items have not been renewed, they will have those itemized. So they'll have to rely on reading their email to confirm that those items have indeed been renewed for them. So it's an interesting change, I think. I don't think I'm expecting any additional problems. I think some of the same small issues that arise with our current system would probably continue with this. People who, for whatever reason, didn't see or didn't get the email, things like that. But I hope that it helps patrons feel like we have their back, we're not trying to trip them up and make them pay fines or anything like that, so we'll see. And we'll definitely get a report back. The county is our biggest jurisdiction, and so it's a good trial to see. They will certainly hear from their patrons if there are any kinks in the system, so.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question.
Yes. So how is that different from, say, because I remember I was able to go online and be able to renew things online without having to go to the library in years past. How is that different from this particular?
This will, without any action from you, if you have not returned it on the day before it's due, it will be renewed automatically, assuming that there is nothing stopping that renewal, like somebody else with a hold on the item.
Okay, okay, okay. I just wanted to see what the difference was between us manually doing it and then this auto. So it's just automatically, you don't even have to
You don't have to do anything, yeah.
Okay, okay.
So it just, you know, relieves that one stress, I know certainly for busy parents, you know, that it can sneak up on you pretty quickly.
But what about the concerns of if somebody is trying to reserve a specific book that you have, and you haven't initiated returning it, or you haven't initiated that you manually are renewing it and it automatically renews it? How does that, does it kind of, does it, is it alerted in the system that somebody's actually reserved that and so that they won't?
Yes, and it will prevent the renewal from going through, and in the email that the patron will receive it will say
You need to
that that item has not been renewed because there is a patron waiting for it.
Okay.
So we're, and with the elimination of the fee for placing the holds, I think people will probably need to rely a little bit more heavily on that rather than just waiting for something to come back.
But then if that patron doesn't return it when they're supposed to, and that other patron is waiting and waiting, and there's no fee, penalty fees, that could sit for Yeah, yes, it can. It indeed it can. It's a catch
To play that even further, right now, there's a cap of five renewals, which that's fifteen extra weeks.
Right.
Yes, that's a long time.
And maybe I shouldn't tell trade secrets, but I will anyway.
No, please do share, yes.
There's a suggestion that five renewals be continued to whatever the maximum is the system can handle, and because we have, you know, math-inclined person sitting here, theoretically
That's a long time.
Fifteen years. You could theoretically
Almost fifteen years.
Check out a book and have it auto renewed fifteen years. If somebody gets their way, I'm not suggesting that is
And that could be the elimination
That is the way
I'm just joking.
That is a possible outcome in the scheme of things.
Right.
I think five renewals is very generous.
We're not, in Daily City, we're not recommending making that change at all.
The system needs to have a cap or something.
And as another barrier that's been removed, we do have a limit of the number of items that you can check out at any given time.
Right.
But the county has opted to eliminate that particular restriction, so they actually do not have a limit on the number.
And I think our limit is fifty items, so that's a lot.
It's not exactly restrictive.
That's a lot, yes.
It's plenty.
Oh, my gosh, I didn't realize it was that.
There are some people that
I think the county and other jurisdictions, including Daily City, are probably seeing there are declines in the circulation of physical items, and so we want to make sure, I mean, you want to have something available in your library for somebody to discover and check out, but at the same time, you don't want stuff sitting there unused, being wasted, so.
Right.
It's always a balance. Yeah, I don't, we're not considering some of those other changes, but I think auto renewal could be a nice feature for people, assuming that that's the way that the group goes.
And how long will this pilot run?
So the pilot is scheduled to run until the next meeting of the Administrative Council, which is early August.
Okay.
So it's just a few months, really.
Are patrons, do they select to opt in, or they're just opt-in automatically?
So currently, county patrons with county items are being affected by the pilot, and I believe that the City of San Mateo, their library has also asked to join the pilot. So they currently don't have an opt-out option. I think it would definitely go more opt-out rather than opt-in. I know that that was discussed, and I think it's just a technical component now of whether or not we can do that. But I could see some people preferring not to have that. So hopefully that will allow, it's, we're trying to make everything as automated as possible, you know.
Right.
So as not to create a burden on tech staff.
And will that affect the, how about the community colleges in San Mateo? You know how they're linked to that, to their libraries? Are they going to be affected in any way, or are they going to be involved in that pilot?
They're not involved in the pilot, and whether or not they will be, go to auto renewal, they're, they tend to join us in a lot of things, but their needs are unique.
Yeah, there's a little difference.
And so they may, they may choose not to do this. But those people, those patrons that are patrons of the college libraries are also residents and patrons of the city libraries, so they would still benefit from it when they're checking out city items.
Okay, okay. Okay, good to know.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Do you, would you like anything from the Board that you haven't heard through discussion?
Any questions or comments?
I think probably, we'll see how the pilot plays out and maybe discuss it again in September.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
All right.
Unless there's strong feelings one way or the other that you would like to
Concerns?
I don't see
It seems to me like a good idea to go ahead and, you know, unless major problems show up during the pilot, which we're not anticipating.
Well, I'm happy to have another jurisdiction test that out for us.
Yes. Okay.
All right. Good luck with that one.
Moving on to trustees, advocacy. Would you like to talk about funding measures?
Well, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but Joseph spoke on, I think, on our behalf, both of our behalves during our last, during your last meeting. We sat down and were able to kind of brainstorm about the advocacy and its measure about taxing and how we can do some fundraising, but we haven't gone very far from there at this point, trying to figure out if there are some other avenues that we can dive into to see how we can gain more interest in how to be able to be more proactive in the libraries in trying to get more funding. So, I mean, it's an ongoing process. I know, I'm sure everybody knows here, and so I think it's more just sitting down and talking about it, whether it be individually as board members or as a group. And I think we need to figure out how that's going to look like moving forward. So maybe trying to schedule some kind of a group event that we can brainstorm, that could be something we can put on the calendar. That's pretty much right now what we have.
So when you say group, are you referring to the Board of Trustees?
As the board, yes. Uh-huh, uh-huh.
And Joseph, how would we do that? Would it have to be a noticed meeting, or?
If we had more than two members, it wouldn't be a public notice meeting. And I don't, normally, you know, personnel issues and real estate transactions are the only things that would constitute cause for a closed session, so it would be an open session, but I don't know if we would attract a lot of folks, but I like the idea, I really enjoyed the Saturday meeting we had. I think the dialogue at a setting like that is conducive.
Yes.
And if I can add just a couple of things on to trustee Devera's comments, there's still a lot of moving parts. One of the other things we talked about is measure K funding, and would there be money there that we could use to maybe engage in some polling to test the waters of the constituent base here?
Right, right.
Would they be willing? I just got the new guideline packet on Friday last week, so I haven't had a chance to go through to see how this would rank for funding. But I also wanted to alert the Board, and this will be coming public soon. I don't think I'm violating any sanctity here, but the city has, you know, as you just saw the budget presentation, the city is looking at funding options too. And some that have, they've been discussed publicly and will be discussed publicly in the next couple of council sessions too, are some ballot measures that wouldn't specifically address any library issues, but are more general fund targeted. And I was hoping the Finance Director would be here tonight because he's more intimately involved in it than I am, but they're exploring an increase in the current business license fees that Daily City pays, and that would be subject to two-thirds of approval for that to be increased. And one of the other areas they've discussed publicly through the budget process is the transient occupancy tax. Some people call it the hotel tax, increasing that. We're a little bit behind our neighbors to the south and certainly far behind San Francisco. I think we're currently at ten percent. So if you stayed at the Hampton Inn, for example, there's a ten percent fee there that's a tax that goes to the city. Most of the cities down the peninsula are at twelve percent. I think San Francisco is at fourteen or sixteen percent, much higher than us. So I think the discussion that will play out over the next few weeks is, one, to put that on the ballot or not, and if it does go on the ballot, would the suggestion be to raise it to twelve percent, to fourteen percent, somewhere in the middle, somewhere higher? So that's going to be discussed at the council, I think, through the month of July. And the goal is to get it on the November ballot, so the decision's got to be made fairly quickly.
Well, soon, yeah, okay.
And another revenue issue that's kind of been floating out there that's not yet resolved is, you know, recreational marijuana dispensaries are popping up across the state. Daily City does not have any, and probably one of the few cities this size to not have any licensed dispensaries anyway. But one of the items too that was discussed, if in the long term Daily City does have a dispensary, having a different taxing structure for that use. Quite a few cities around here have already adopted taxes for recreational marijuana. Pacifica residents passed it the last, not this June ballot, but I think last November. And I know some of the other neighboring communities have already tackled that. And the question of Daily City, it may be a moot issue. If there are no dispensaries, then it wouldn't make sense to tax something that doesn't exist. So I think they've got, they've got two issues to wrestle with. One, whether or not to permit it and how to permit it, and then if it would
We do, yeah.
be permitted.
It's the percentage.
Thinking, and it would be very limited. I think in Pacifica, they've licensed up to six. I think it would be less than that in Daily City, if any, if any.
Right, right.
So it probably wouldn't be a large source of revenue, but that's, the three moving parts there are, again, the business license, tax measure
TOT.
TOT, and then possibly
The POT.
POT. Well put. So library-specific funding hasn't been discussed, so, you know, I don't think we've got the momentum to carry that into November, but
No.
I like the idea of doing some long-range discussions with the community and gauging whether the community would be willing to support that. Little research I've done, it seems like communities are more supportive of bond measures for a new library as opposed to for a new library, as opposed to increasing hours or staffing at libraries. And that's kind of a dilemma for us too, because it would, as much as we would love a shiny new library with the current staffing, it would be a little bit challenging too. So, we'll see where that all goes, but I just, and I will continue this item, I guess, for the next meeting, because I just got that Measure A packet, and I got to see if this would qualify under the rules they've just put out.
Great. Thank you for all of that additional information.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff...
There's a lot of moving parts.
So, Tricia, you're chairing this initiative. Would you look at a couple of dates and see if maybe the Ceramati Community Room is available?
Yeah, I can do that.
And then communicate through Chayla, you know, to all the board members, so that we can find a time, sit around, where we're all facing each other instead of this kind of a situation.
Yep, we'll definitely do that. That'd be great.
Okay.
That would be great.
Super, well, I'll count on you for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll keep you posted on that one.
Okay, talking points. Chayla, thank you very much for turning our talking points into a prototype bookmark. You've got a couple of ideas for modifications, so just bring it back at the next meeting, and hopefully we'll get it into the library soon. Okay, a report from DCPLA. So they last met on May 22nd. The events committee chaired by, co-chaired by Marie, Jane, and Eloisa, had three items. The crazy about cars and coma planning is continuing. Jane Chambers is chairing that particular initiative. Letters have been sent to prospective sponsors, and the committee is now meeting weekly every Wednesday. I believe at four o'clock, but that may vary. If anyone has a particular interest in it, you could get ahold of Jane. There was a review of the right-footed screening at Skyline College. Just, again, general discussion about impressions and how that went, and everyone felt very warm and fuzzy and good about that, the turnout, the very impressive, you know, couple that were featured in the film. So that was a success. And then Susan mentioned that the book drop ribbon-cutting ceremony will be tomorrow at 11:00.
Tomorrow at 11:00, and I'm very excited that our contractor came through, and they have installed the new counter seating at the Westlake Library, so we can take a look at that seating as well. That was in just this very last round of funding.
No, that's even better.
So, exciting, yeah.
So that will also be tomorrow.
It looks really nice.
It's at 11:00?
11:00.
So, to the extent that, you know, the board can participate in that, please be there.
I do.
I'm going to be at that branch tomorrow, so.
Wonderful.
Super.
Yeah.
Okay.
I will be there at 11:00, but I need to be out at the airport at noon, so I'm on a tight schedule. If, when 11:30 rolls around, you know, the pumpkin coach will come and carry me off.
He will slither away, okay.
Membership. There's ongoing tabling efforts by Susan, and speaking to various groups and organizations by Tom Nouris. There's also a need to clarify the difference between a DCPLA donor and a member. Members being people who pay dues on a regular basis and are entitled to certain benefits and communications versus donors who make gifts perhaps one time or on a recurring basis. So, right now, that's a little bit fuzzy. When a person makes a donation, they don't, in a way, know whether they're a member or not. So DCPLA is going to try and find a way to clarify and distinguish between the two.
Okay.
Communications, there was a new website. We've been talking about them, developing a new website. A lady by the name of Kiki Wong was there to demo a prototype. It has not gone live yet. I communicated with Susan Brizden Smith today, and she doesn't have a date when the new website is going to go live, but it will be really cool when it does. You'll be impressed.
Is this pro bono, the person that's doing this, or the...
I don't know what the financial arrangement is or is not.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just not sure.
Just curious.
Raquel Espanya is the person who's chairing communications, and she's from the county, and she's excellent. So she's the one who found Kiki and, you know, got her involved, and Kiki is, you know, really knowledgeable and...
Savvy, okay.
Yeah. The executive director's report started off with Susan reviewing grant applications. The application to the Danford Foundation is still pending. She mentioned that the annual report had been completed, printed, and distributed. The layout was by Don Cecil, and it was published by Ceramati Shopping Center. She also mentioned that, speaking of Measure AK, that DCPLA had made a request to supervisor David Canepa's office to investigate possible Measure AK funding, but so far have not gotten a reply. When I say so far, I'm going back to the date of the meeting. I'm not sure if anything's happened since. Another exciting thing that happened is that the books that DCPLA collects through donations and then tries to sell, does sell successfully about every other year, have been moved to Seton Hospital. Seton has volunteered to provide storage space. Seventy boxes of books were moved with the help of Republic Services and Seton staff and employees. So Susan wanted to acknowledge all of that support and help. The library report, Chayla talked back then about the status of the branch, the Westlake Branch Dropbox and the summer learning program. I provided a report on our Board of Trustees meeting, and the meeting was adjourned. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. We will move to announcements and communications. One thing I would like to announce in the way of a reminder is that our next meeting in July is the board reorganization meeting, where we will elect new officers. So I'd like every board member to consider whether he or she would have an interest in either being president or vice president, and, you know, if you're interested in one of those positions, particularly being president, I would just ask that you go into it with an agenda. You know, this board has had varying levels of activism, and it's kind of discouraging if all we do is meet, you know, once a month, and we don't really have some things, some projects that we're working on. I'm very proud of what we're doing right now, and I'd like to see that continue, but, you know, that's going to take the imagination and the energy and the focus of a president who either can delegate or takes responsibility for making things happen. So anyway, we have a month to think about that. Any other announcements in communications?
On the learning side?
Sure.
Well, we had our very first DIY activity for the summer. The Jefferson Elementary School district got it kind of late, so we're kind of waiting for them to be free. It was a fun little program. At the Ceramati Library, we made tops out of upcycled CDs and DVDs and water bottle caps and marbles and little wood wheels. The participants really enjoyed it, and we'll be actually repeating that particular program at the Westlake Library later in the summer. It's been at the very end, on the 3rd of August. So you can pick up our schedule of activities for the summer. We have at least a few things each and every week, and they're going on at all the locations. Most of them are going to be kind of hands-on activities, meant to be, you know, arts and education, some engineering types of things. But we also have some outside groups coming in, paid performers, and the very first one is going to be next Tuesday at Ceramati Library. The Bay Area Discovery Museum does this thing called fairy tale engineering, and I haven't seen it, but one of my staff witnessed it and really recommended it. They are, they come in and they tell a fairy tale, and then they discuss ways to solve some of the problems that arise in the fairy tale through engineering. And it is, it's an active thing. They build, they try things and experiment. And this one, one of our other staff actually was able to get a grant from the Association of Children's Librarians to pay for them to come in and do that, so we're very excited.
Super.
Yeah, that one's next Tuesday afternoon at 3:00 PM.
Thank you.
And I'll just give my usual summer plug. Junior Giants program is underway. There are 90 kids right now on the field at Westlake. There were 60 last night, and we've got to make out two. But the reason I mention that is because they really stress reading, and the kids have their reading log, and there's milestones for, I think, every 10 hours or so. They get different rewards, and it's all paid for by the Giants Community Fund, so things like water bottles and wristbands. And ultimately, if an entire team completes their reading logs 100%, they qualify to have a trip where they actually play baseball at AT&amp;T Park, and Daly City's been really great in that regard the last few, I mean, my teams have been out there the last three years, and I'm hoping to keep that streak alive.
Look at you, Coach.
Really, we really emphasize, and it's a peer pressure thing.
I'm sure it is.
It really is, because if one kid's not keeping up, the other kids...
They're holding everybody back.
Yeah, I'm sure. It's a good merger of library and recreation.
That's good, that's a good incentive. Why not?
Really good.
Here, here.
It's the least they could do, braving the cold out there and saying, playing baseball in Alaska here.
Welcome to Daly City.
There is a semi-pro baseball team in Fairbanks, Alaska, and on June 21st, which is the longest day of the year, they have the Midnight Sun game, and they start the game at midnight with no artificial lighting, and they play until 2:30, 3:00 in the morning.
And I bet it is warmer in Fairbanks, Alaska on June 21st than it is in Daly City.
Well, probably, it certainly could be. It could be.
That's cool.
Okay, any other announcements or communications?
No.
Agenda building for next meeting. We'll continue the city budget overview.
Mm-hmm.
That's...
What do...
The overview?
Do we need to...
No, I'm sorry, city budget review, you know, update.
I don't know that there'll be any news month to month now.
Well, I thought you were going to, I'm sorry.
The funding measures.
Funding measures.
Funding measures will be...
Funding measures we're going to talk about.
Yeah, I think the budget overview.
I think that's it. It's pretty much...
Unless something drastically changes, you know, that's locked in for a two-year cycle.
Yeah, I'm just so used to the budget being the continuing item.
Yeah.
Yes, funding measures, thank you very much. And we need to have the board reorganization on the agenda. Are there any other items from staff or trustees?
One other quick announcement.
Sure.
If you had not yet heard, city manager Patricia Martel is retiring.
Yes.
She's down to about 10 more days or so.
Oh, really?
There is a reception party for her that will be taking place a week from Thursday. That's June 28th, right here in the rotunda, from 5:00 to 8:00, and I'm sure she would appreciate seeing your faces as she says her goodbyes.
June 28th, 5:00 to 8:00?
Yeah. I mean, we've had to get in order, was it?
What is her official last day?
I think her official last day is the 30th, but I think that might be her last functioning day as city manager.
Right. That's great. Thank you for mentioning that, Joseph. Okay, is there any public comment?
Any public comment? I guess not.
Okay, hearing none. Entertaining, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, yep.
Clear second?
I second that one.
Okay, moved in second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.